It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order, invite everyone to please arise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Jim Dammick.
Here.
Dave Dammick.
Here.
James Shire.
Here.
Lynn David.
Here.
Eric Jones.
President.
Mr. President.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed?
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Right.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Shire.
Yes.
Davey.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Standby.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda? Second. Roll call.
Davey.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Red.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Standby.
Yes.
Next item is a call to order the public hearing on fiscal year 22, District 427 Budget. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the budget this evening? Is there anyone, records should indicate that no one spoke. Is there anyone who wishes to submit written materials about the budget? Records should show that no written materials were submitted and that the hearing is therefore concluded. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who'd like to address the board? Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters, some interesting things from Ruta especially, I think, in there. It's not just us who's in the thick of this whole thing, it's a whole lot of other districts. FOIA requests, there was one, it's been responded to. It's going to calm down when things cool off and the weather starts to get cooler, is that right? Is that a problem? Committee reports.
No planning zoning. SEF did have their State of the District event today, Mr. Wilder spoke at, Eric was at it as well. We had about 40 people or so in attendance.
Oh, good.
So I can have either of you guys chat about that a little bit. And then the second thing I had was asked to serve on the Inclusive American History Commission for ISPE, and we had our first meeting yesterday afternoon from 3:30 to 5:00, and our next one is October 8th, and we are supposed to be done by the end of this year.
Oh?
Yeah.
That's a tall ask, to get done there.
Little bit. I think there's about 32 people on that committee, 29 or 30, something like that, including some state representatives and state senators. It's an interesting mix of people, so we'll see where it goes. By the next meeting, I'll have my committee assignment, one of four committees, so basically either your own resources.
Subcommittee of the committee?
Subcommittee of the committee, yeah. There's basically resources, is one. The second one is basically procedures and parameters of how it would be instructed. Third would be professional learning for teachers. And fourth would be pulling together the actual final report that students learn. I had to rate which ones I would want to serve on, but I picked resources or procedures as my top. Hopefully you get one of those. We'll see what happens, I'll know by October 8th. But if you guys wanted to share anything else about the State of the District event, feel free.
No, I mean, it was really well put on. I thought the presentation was a good, high-level overview of where the district's at, I think as far as just kind of picking up, since we haven't had a lot of these in recent years, you've got to start somewhere, you know, going forward. I think it'd be helpful to continue to compare to previous years and kind of track and tie in district goals as part of that, and things that measure and show progress towards. It was a little reminiscent of, I know we did a couple of, not, community nights with Kathy, you know, several years ago, but obviously took a backseat during COVID, so it's nice to have an event like this, and finally we get more public participation in there so they know what's going on and how we've got more involvement in board meetings, maybe that's a natural extension to that. Overall, that was good.
Blessed to be sponsored by the SEF, the Education Foundation, and I've met them in some exposure, and the recording of the presentation will be made public so that everything that I shared in one or two questions will all be shared with the public too, so that was good. Good first crack at it, and I think you brought a good point. Future years, just kind of comparing some of the information shared today and updating that to start to see what it's going to turn out, so I think that's what we'll try to do.
Other committee reports? From the Finance Committee?
The Finance Department.
Yeah, I thought the summary that Steve's enough, summed it up pretty nicely, but do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Just in case you wanted to add anything or subtract anything. Any other committee reports? Assistant Superintendent for Business report.
Thanks, Dan. I have a couple items tonight. The first being debt restructuring. As most of you are aware, we've been going through this restructuring over the last few years to really level off our debt that the district has, and so we're kind of in that final stage here, looking at the last issue here to do some restructuring, and so I have Jen Curio here from PMA. We're lucky to have her, she's been with us through all of this, and so I'm going to invite her up here to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Nicole, and good evening, everybody. It's great to see you. I know it's been a while since the working cash bonds were issued earlier this year. I wanted to walk you through, first, a brief market update, so hopefully you've got the electronic version of the presentation in front of you before it loads up here, but this first slide that we're looking at is the historical perspective going back to 2003, the MND, or the Municipal Market Data Index, which again is that index off of which municipal bonds, tax exempt bonds, price. So going back to 2003, in the gray shaded area in the background, that's the Fed rate and all the decisions the Fed's made since early 2003, and you can compare that to what the Municipal Market Data Index has done since that time. So we're tracking the one-year rate all the way at the bottom in that light blue line, up to the 20-year MND rate, which is represented by that green line at the top. And then at various points in time where you see rates kind of spiking, we've identified kind of what was happening with the economy or in the world that seemed to have caused those spikes. So the first circled area, we're raised by within 20, sorry, 2008 during the Great Recession. The 2016 presidential election is another one of those examples, and then most recently, the onset of the COVID pandemic, of course, was one. The big takeaway with this slide, though, is that we continue to be like we were earlier this year, at historically low tax exempt municipal rates, so it's still a really good time to be making either new money bond issue or refinancing decisions. This slide highlights just going back to January 2020, so the last, not even two years, so you can see the onset of the pandemic caused rates to spike, we really didn't know what was going to happen or how the economy was going to respond to it. Once things settled down kind of mid-May of last year, for the last year and a half, you see some smaller peaks and valleys, but generally speaking, rates have been fairly stable overall, and they continue to be that way. You know, last week the Fed met, and there is some talk that the Fed may raise rates a bit earlier than they initially, or not initially, but than they thought for the last few meetings, so rather than waiting until 2023, seems more and more likely that by the end of 2022, we'll see an increase in the Fed rate, which doesn't dictate everything in our market by any means, but there has been some reaction over the past couple of days to that news, and rates are going up slightly. They tend to do that when the Fed, you know, makes those kinds of headlines, so not totally unexpected, but rates have increased a little bit more in recent days as well. So to recap, where, you know, how far the board and the district have come with this overall debt restructuring plan that began in 2015, you know, when we first started talking about this, the board implemented a plan to achieve 4% year-over-year increases in the bond and interest levy. Now, the plan was not implemented all at once, it was done in various phases for several reasons. One of those being that the bonds that had to be restructured in order to achieve those targets were either non-callable at all, or had to be restructured on a taxable basis and would be more inefficient and more expensive as a result. Now, in hindsight, looking at that historical rate chart we just saw, rates since 2015 have either held constant or come down since that point in time, so even though it can be very tempting to get that pretty picture right away, right off the bat, this is a great example of the board's patience really paying off, and the decision to implement this in phases really having paid off over the last few years. Another big reason that it was implemented this way is that the phasing allowed the board to revisit that annual increase objective, and in fact, in 2017, the board did reexamine it and decided to increase that objective due to some healthy EAP growth, among other reasons, from 4% annually to 6%, and that is the target that we've been hitting for the last several years. So this is the district's current debt service, so principal and interest, your total bond payments, this is what is currently existing. So you can see the blue bars represent the total debt service by levy year across the bottom. That light blue dotted line over there, that's the 6% trend line that we're hitting and not, you know, we're not going to see that in this plan. And then there are two years that still have some peak debt service amounts, some spikes in debt service. Those years contain the 2013 A and B bonds primarily, and those are callable beginning February 1st of 2022, so we are quickly approaching that window of time, within 90 days of that date, where we can restructure those on a tax exempt basis. And the good news, which I'm sure you'll all be very happy to hear, is that this would be the final phase of this comprehensive plan that we've been talking about for six years. So with that, we have a couple of structuring options for your consideration and discussion as needed tonight. The first one, which I'll call Scenario 1, or the Level Debt Service option, is on this slide. In the background, in gray, you see that key, that's your existing debt picture, and the colored columns represent what it would look like post-implementation through this option. So here, the blue, the blue column represents only the non-referendum debt service, or your limited bonds, including those working cash bonds that were issued earlier this year. And those are subject to what's called the debt service extension base. If you recall, that's the DSET, represented by that solid red line, and the difference between what your annual non-referendum payments are and that line represents your DSET margin, or your capacity to issue future non-referendum debt should you need to. And as you may recall, we implemented a plan with those working cash bonds to allow that flexibility in a couple of years, should you need it. There's no, obviously, plan to do so, but it gives you that flexibility if you run into that situation. The green portion of the columns represents the originally referendum-approved debt, and that includes these 2013 bonds that we would be restructuring. So this Level Debt Service option is just that. We have a couple more years of achieving the 6% target, and then if no other debt is issued, this would level off right around 7.1 million annually. And just to give you an idea, for illustrative purposes only, on the next slide, you've got in light blue, this DSET margin filled in. Again, no plan to do this, but should you need to utilize that capacity, that's built into the model, so you, if that needed to be used at some point in the future, you can see we're still hitting 6% annual increase for two additional years, and that debt service levels off with what would be about 7.4 million. The next scenario, second option, is very similar for the first 10 years, but then there is a natural debt service drop built in. So the benefit to this drop that begins here and continues on is that, both one of two things, if the district never issues any future debt, then the taxpayer at this point in time would feel a slight reduction on the bond portion of their tax bill from the district. Or if the district finds itself needing to borrow years down the road, you may be able to do so a little more cost efficiently from the taxpayer's perspective, it may not be as impactful because you already have this drop in debt service built into your current structure. So it's just a little more flexibility to issue more debt, perhaps without increasing the annual levy at all, or just increasing it less so than you would if you went with Scenario 1.
Just a quick question, you would need a referendum note in this scenario if you knew that?
Right, so flexibility here, since we're already incorporating this possible utilization of the non-referendum debt, anything that would affect this drop and kind of fill that in would be a referendum issue. Again, for illustrative purposes, you know, very hypothetical, but it would give you that flexibility of 10 years down the road, the board at that time, you know, needed to make a decision like that. So the difference between Options 1 and 2 in dollars is about $330,000. The other difference is that Scenario 2 extends this referendum debt payment out by one more year. So those are the big differences between those two options, and we'll take a look at the differences in a little more detail as well. This slide just showing you that if you do utilize that non-referendum debt service capacity in this light blue area, that you still have this level debt service not exceeding about 7.4 million. So here, we're comparing what the existing debt structure looks like, so if the board chooses not to act at this point in time, compared to Scenario 1, which keeps the debt level for the duration, and then Scenario 2, which has that debt service drop in about 10 years. And the big differences here are the very top numbers, which are the estimated net debt service change. Because rates are so low, Scenario 1, even though in both cases we are extending the repayment on these 2013 bonds, because rates are so low, and those bonds have 4% interest rate attached to them, we're actually saving a little bit even with this structure. So $330,000 lower in Scenario 1, it's about three even with Scenario 2. The other difference compared to before is that Scenario 2 extends those green bars, those referendum bond payments, by one additional year. And then the other statistics are very similar between Options 1 and 2. And as we've done in the past, and it's a lot of number time, but we wanted to show you, like I said, we've done before, what these projected tax bills look like for a median homeowner, whether you leave it alone as it currently is, or implement one of the two structures that we just discussed. And so again, this is just a projection, this is for the median home, which is $205,000. Okay? And the big difference is between these annual tax bills, which again are just for the bond portion of the district's tax bill, not including any operating side, not including any other taxing bodies, of course, but for each option, we are showing the estimated bond and interest portion of the tax bill, as well as what that increase or decrease looks like year-over-year. Okay? So with the existing structure, you can see how this tax bill jumps from about $730 to $950 in 2027, and then it increases again in 2028, again, that's if you do nothing, followed by a drop in the tax bill. Scenario 1 and 2 both smooth out, you can see they're just basically leveled year-over-year. And then again, the difference between Scenarios 1 and 2 is concentrated into this back end where Scenario 2 has a drop versus Scenario 1, which kind of keeps it leveled for a few more years before finally falling off. So in total, the total bond portion of the tax bill payment for this median homeowner are roughly the same, they're actually slightly lower than they would be if you did nothing in Scenario 1, by $27 total, it's not present value, it's just total dollars. And in Scenario 2, it adds about $9 over this horizon to the tax bill. So all in all, similar in total impact on the homeowner, just where that impact is is really the decision. Any questions about, you know, the differences between Scenarios 1 and 2, or anything else that you can answer?
So there, just for clarification purposes for everybody, so there, this doesn't address it, but there is nothing we can do for the non-referendum-based bonds right now, that little sliver is all we're going to have to work with going forward.
Well, so your debt service extension base does grow year-over-year by the lesser of CPI or 5%, so it is possible that that margin will increase, so should you need more capacity, you will probably get it as long as there's some sort of CPI increase.
I'm just thinking long-term, there's a number of maintenance items that our buildings require, particularly our high school, that would be nice to take out of there because they're not a very popular referendum item. So, you know, if we can find a way to cover those as we're going forward or on a phased plan, there's some wiggle room for that as it is important.
Is there one scenario that you guys would need to work with?
I prefer flexibility, so I would leave it to far right myself.
Me too.
So the way I understand it, Scenario 2 is less flexible than Scenario 1. So to you, that's my, am I understanding that right? Because we're using up some of the referendum base to pay down sooner, so Scenario 2 would be putting the district in a less flexible situation. Is that, you're shaking your head yes, is that sound?
So Scenario 2 has more flexibility from the standpoint that it does extend the debt out by one year, which may be where you're seeing kind of the less flexibility because there is one more year of payment. However, with that drop, it allows you a little bit of an area where you can fill that in without having the taxpayer have to feel as big of a burden should you need to issue more debt at that point in time. So you're sort of, you know, it's almost like when you refinance your mortgage, you know, that could be, you can kind of think of that as like the point in time where you get that lower payment, and now you can afford, you know, a slightly higher car payment if you're, you know, if you're looking to buy a car at that time, for example, you can kind of fill that in with a new payment for something else.
But it does not change the amount that we can issue on a non-referendum basis.
Correct, the non-referendum capacity is unchanged.
It's unaffected, we're just talking about what the total.
You're above the red line, yeah.
The total bill that the taxpayer sees, that's the flexibility we're talking about.
Correct.
We've got some extra, by smoothing it out a little bit, we've got a little extra capacity to add more debt without them feeling as much of a hit. My personal preference, I guess I don't see those $330,000 being worth that, what seems like a small amount of flexibility in those few years at the end, so my personal preference at this point in time is I'd rather just save the money and get this debt off of our
And to your point, there are other upstanding bonds of the district that become callable, you know, years down the road. There are ways where we can sort of build that in should you need to, you know, if you do go with Scenario 1, it's not like it's impossible to, you know, reduce that burden. You know, we know what rates are right now, so that's why we wanted to present that flexible option, but certainly not the only tool in the toolbox.
I guess the biggest question I've got for you then is, say it's a year from now, say it's five years from now, and we decide, all right, there's 10 million in projects that need to be done at the high school or wherever, and we start to lay out what that bond issuance is going to look like. Where down this timeline curve do we start putting all, do we have to start putting that in? What sort of flexibility do you have when you issue those bonds and say, well, our first debt service is going to, you know, start spiking or start getting larger in 2037, 2038? How much flexibility do we have to push past that smoothed-out area into the empty space, I guess?
Sure. So it depends on what you're talking, like whether it's non-referendum, which, you know, if you're talking about a $10 million project, for example, a lot of that can be done on that non-referendum basis, and, you know, certainly depends on where rates are at that point in time. That capacity opens up in about three years, so, you know, about two years from now, is there any, you know, thoughts on having to do some maintenance work or something like that? We can certainly start looking at it at that point, in order to kind of hit that sweet spot of where that capacity really opens up. As far as, you know, the referendum side of the equation, again, because there are other bonds that are callable at various points in time in the future, we can probably come up with a plan that does reduce some of that taxpayer impact, no matter when it is.
I mean, you kind of understand what I'm asking, like, we're saying, is $330,000 worth of extra flexibility? Well, how long do we have to keep going before we don't care about that flexibility anymore? Because we can work around, we don't need that flexibility, we can work around it?
Sure.
If we can't do anything for the next two years, and then we're fine, it doesn't matter? Or is this always going to be, is it always going to be nice to have that flexibility because we really need it if we're going to?
So the way that I would look at it is, if you have this built in now, it's that much less that you'd have to restructure should you want to implement some sort of bigger referendum plan or something like that. Right, so that drop in debt service, it actually reduces for those last three years from about $7 million down to $6 million, so that $1 million annually, just even for those last three years, can support a pretty sizable bond issue as far as interest payments go. So again, can be accommodated if we don't go with Scenario 2? Yes, it's just, it's a little less efficient to do so if we can, you know, think about what flexibility might be needed in the future now. You know, again, we can work around it, I don't think there's really a set timeline where it doesn't matter anymore because those drops occur, you know, 10 years and more down the road. I think for that, you know, amount of time, right at the 10-year mark is probably when you want to take advantage of that drop, if that's what you're, you know, thinking of doing, but like I said, you don't need to, you can just let those tax bills, you know.
My thought process is that maintenance-based work, it's going to happen more, it's going to happen before 10 years. So that's why I'm working at that other, you know, non-referendum-based dollars, that how can we, how can we accomplish that over the next three to five years? Based on our conversation at the last board meeting is where I'm thinking of the flexibility piece. I'm not going to be on the board, Jim might be. I'm not going to be on the board then, but we were talking about airport road extension, plank road changing, and we said those are 10, 15, 20 years out, and that's kind of where that window is, because that's when we might have to have another, if we, even if we stay on a very controlled growth pattern, we might be in a position where we need another elementary school or significant additions at the 10, 15, 18-year mark, so that's the flexibility I'm thinking of. I could go either way if we can make it work either way, but that's why I was thinking flexibility based on that conversation at the last meeting, much farther down the road than we are now. I mean, the maintenance stuff's got to happen over the next three to five years, and we're going to have to figure that out in that below-the-red-line sliver as well as operating funds, which is your change. That's where I, that's just where I've come from.
To Steve's point, though, just to reaffirm my understanding, the risk then is if, at that point, let's say we took the rabble, we paid it down sooner, and then we did need to access it for maintenance, we risk whatever the Fed's rate is at that time, or whatever bonds are issuing at that time, and if it is lower, we could, we'd be fine, that would have been the better choice, but if it's higher, then we would have been better off having locked in at this lower rate. And we stand to save $328,000 over this period for the taxpayer if we bet correctly that the Fed rate would be lower theoretically if we did need the money down the road.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Right, so if rates happen to be lower at that point in time, then that's true, you'd be better off, you know, at that point.
I would say, I, just on that basis, I feel, I feel a little more comfortable with Scenario 1, just because it's bird, to me, it's bird in the hand, you know, you know you saved $328,000, we don't know what the Fed rate's going to be down the road, but I'm not hard pressed against Scenario 2 either. But I'm not hard pressed against scenario two either.
They are very similar. I wish I had more to offer. Sometimes when it isn't that big of a difference, it's almost a more difficult choice. So I
I agree, and I guess that's the issue I'm struggling with is without any clear need one way or the other, I might be told to save whatever dollars I can. So that would lead me toward scenario one. I can fully appreciate how we could find a use for that flexibility in the future. You know, well, shoot, I wish we'd done that, and maybe now we gotta do it, and now rates are twice as high, and so we can still do it, it's just gonna cost
It's gonna cost more then.
But I could say, yeah.
It's like what I'm calling.
Such is the life of predicting the future.
Like I said, I'm not, that was my thought process, I'm not married to it.
When you look at the rates though, it would, it would be, we'd be hard pressed if they went down. It would be surprising if we went down much lower than this. So it's almost
I don't disagree with you, but then I can look at the chart going back to 2003 and that's all we've done as well.
Well, it's almost a given
I can't go any lower than this.
It's almost a given that we're gonna, rates will be a little lower. So I don't think we could bank on rates being lower. I mean, from a historical perspective, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to be the scenario we're in right now, so. But, you know, you're right, obviously something could really happen and we could really go into the hole and start paying negative interest. But, yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's likely that we're gonna see interest rates go down too much.
From just the perspective of the taxpayer though, just from the outside looking in, I think perception-wise, I think scenario one makes the most sense, just with what, with what we know right now. I mean, we could do the if, and, you know, if this happened, then this happened, but just based on what we know right now in the current climate, we know we can save $328,000 to the taxpayer. We know for sure. To me, it seems like, I, again, I'm like 51% on that in my camp, just because it's the no, but I could, there's an element of risk here, so.
You have an opinion, Nicole?
So my opinion is initially option one, scenario one, just because there is that best savings, and it does, you know, help the taxpayers a little bit also. So I think all around, it's probably the best choice. But I wanna be the greatest team too, so I appreciate the, the, the discussion.
You know, that's the way I was leaning initially, but now after hearing this conversation, I'm not so sure, but I guess I still lean in that direction.
As long as we still get the capability of being flexible to an address and meeting when most of us are probably not gonna be on the board
Right.
For that group, to have some flexibility. As long as there's some, again, it may cost them more then, we don't know, but at least they have the opportunity. They're not locked in where they can't, they don't have a choice.
So we're not, we're not voting on this tonight?
No, no.
We voted on the next slide. John's got a timeline in there.
Yeah, so the next meeting, October 12th, could be the soonest that you approve a parameters resolution, which authorizes delegates to approve the sale when it does occur. And again, that just gives you the flexibility in those parameters that we draft into the resolution, that when the bond sale does occur, you don't need the full board's action to approve it, just the authorized delegates. And that way, if the market just isn't quite where we want it to be, it's moving in the wrong direction, the momentum's going the wrong way for that day or two in mid-October, which is when we're tentatively planning a bond sale if you choose to move forward, then we have that flexibility with the parameters of the solution to wait if we need to. And again, we have all the way until March 1st to affect the upcoming levies, so we have quite a bit of flexibility if for some reason the market is really not favorable in mid-October for whatever reason. And then that would allow us to close on the current refunding of the 2013 bonds as early as mid-November, again, right in that 90-day window for the call date on those bonds, which is allowing us to issue on a tax-exempt basis instead of taxable. Any questions or concerns about the timeline or?
That's it, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Do you have any additional slides?
Um, no, those are just in there.
You too.
Yeah.
That's your disclosure.
The next item I have is tonight I would ask the board to approve the final budget for fiscal year '22. I presented the tentative budget at the last board meeting, two board meetings ago, I guess it was. The only difference that you could see in our, in the tentative versus the final is we were allocated those extra $3. And so you'll see in the budget, we budgeted for receiving half of that money in this fiscal year. So you'll see that on the expenditure side and on the revenue side. So the budget itself didn't change as far as the surplus amount that we had anticipated, but you would see running these expenditures up, that that will be a quarter. So if there's any questions that I can answer, otherwise I would ask for the resolution to go.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding the fiscal year '22 district budget as proposed? Second? Discussion?
That's great that both of us refunds were approved, and like, keep stressing, those are one-time, one-time gift to help and that doesn't permanently stay apart budget.
So no permanent progress.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
D'Vito?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dambach?
Yes.
Superintendent, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. I promised Steve and Eric that they would be bored seeing these first four slides because I shared them at the state of the district event today, just because I wanted to highlight for the attendees that these are things that guide the decisions that we make, the conversations we have. So I apologize, Eric and Steve, that you're seeing me again. We'll start with our mission, empowering all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision is to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and will come back the next day. Core values, among them are integrity, empathy, citizenship, and collaboration. And our professional learning communities discuss answers to these questions. What do we want students to know and learn? What do students want to know and learn? How do we know if they learned it? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? That takes me to 8.01, which is remote instruction quarantine. So really, this is kind of a response to the last board meeting where there were some public comments and questions, just felt like, hey, let's step back and just kind of review where we're at with these things. There are a variety of topics in here, including remote instruction quarantine, but a couple of other topics as well. So these are mostly kind of summaries, but there are some updates. The health department has always held the final authority regarding quarantines. This question really came up here recently because there had started to be some challenges to quarantine. The question was, who issues the quarantine? Is it the school district? Is it the health department? Ultimately, the health department has always issued the quarantine. Because of our close related, working relationship with the health department, we have issued that on their behalf, you could say, at times. But really, because of these challenges, it's really become necessary to be very clear. The health department issues quarantine. School district then excludes students based on quarantine. And for a period of time, a couple of weeks there, there was a question about if quarantine's issued and there's a challenge to that, it kind of leaves the school district in a gray area. You know, the challenge is really is the health department then what happens, you know, to the school district. So not last week, but the week before, there were two executive orders passed, and one of them had to do with excluding students who had been quarantined, and that executive order required that. So whether the quarantine is challenged or not, the school district is still responsible for excluding students for the duration of that quarantine. When it comes to quarantines, the health department has had flexibility to look at four different options. We talked about this back in August, but these options really haven't changed. It really comes down to the health department seeing and reviewing the information that we share with them about each case, each positive case, and those quarantines. Each case seems to be a little bit different. The health department reviews all that information and then makes a decision about one of these two, or one of these four options. Option one remains the gold standard. This is a 14-day quarantine, the student, close contact, the staff member is quarantined and excluded for 14 days. That's been the gold standard from the beginning of the pandemic. Option two is a 10-day quarantine. In that case, the individual cannot return to the school environment unless they've had a negative COVID test, a document, and they share that with the school district. Option three is a seven-day quarantine, also with a documented negative COVID test, but it has to be on day five, six, or seven. So it's gotta be a 48-hour window prior to inclusion of day seven. Individuals on a seven-day quarantine cannot return to school until eight and with that negative COVID test. Option four is the one that's really gotten a lot of conversation over the last month or so, and that is the test-to-stay option. That has been an option for the health department since the beginning of the school district, and it continues to be an option for the health department. So under this scenario, an individual may, this is a close contact only, so a positive COVID individual has to be out of school for at least seven, 10, or 14 days. A close contact can stay in school if they're tested on days one, three, five, and seven, and the results for those, from those rapid tests are negative. If they're positive at any point, then that individual will begin seven-day, seven, 10, or 14-day quarantine. The day that that individual is exposed to a positive COVID case is actually day zero, as per referendum reference. So that, day zero is on Wednesday, day one, when that first test has to happen, is actually Thursday. And we go through that progression. Schools must implement universal masking and be able to maintain social distancing in order to use this test-to-stay, and I'll highlight that because we've had situations where we were not able to do that. We communicated that to the health department, and that played into a decision the health department made about quarantine. The other thing I'll throw in here is that under an outbreak, everything's kind of off the window, you know, and really, those are unique situations where the health department reviews all of the information that we can provide them, and they make the best possible decision. We had an outbreak at the beginning of the school year, the health department decided that the test-to-stay option was not possible during that time in order to restrict transmission of COVID. Once the population of individuals who was impacted by that quarantine were back in school, back in our buildings, test-to-stay was, was an option again. So an outbreak kind of changes things, but then today, it's the health department who makes that final decision on quarantines.
Steve, can I ask you a question related to everyone now?
Sure.
Does, do you know, or does Nick know, how vaccination status plays into quarantine options from the health department's perspective?
This is like a test. I'm gonna answer, and Nick, you tell me if I'm right or not. My understanding is that vaccinated individuals do not need to quarantine unless they are showing COVID symptoms.
That was my understanding as well.
Is that bad? Yes, you did awesome.
But that's the health department's policy.
It's the health department's policy.
Right.
So actually, I believe that's IDPH's policy, the health department's policy. Yep, that's not our decision.
Essentially, just to recap, we're gathering the information on the student or staff member who tested positive, providing that to the health department, and essentially, we're just getting the information, providing it to them, they're coming up with a decision when it comes down to it.
Absolutely.
And then we're delivering that, so.
They have the authority to
Yeah.
Issue the quarantine.
Yes.
We don't.
Yeah, and the water was probably a little muddy that last school year. Because we were the one communicating that, it really ultimately always came from the health department. You have to remember, not just the board, but really the public here, you have to remember that during a pandemic, it's a crisis kind of situation, you know? We're doing our best to kind of survive in the pants, and, and I think for a long period of time, we had a good working relationship with the health department. So we had a really good sense of what kind of decision they would make with quarantine. Plus, these options weren't even available last year. So really gave us 14 days, that was really about it. But whenever quarantines occurred, we were part of that loop, I think, because we worked closely with them and we were pretty much on the same page. We really needed to clarify things this fall, but you're right, now it's very clear. If there's a positive case in the schools, we gather that information, we do the contact tracing, we turn it over to the health department, and they ultimately make the decision. Last point under test-to-stay is that students who opt and qualify for test-to-stay, not only can they stay in school, but they may be allowed to participate in activities. So if a student is in a test-to-stay protocol and they're on the football team, they may be allowed to practice and may be allowed to play in the game. Ultimately, that's the health department's decision also, and really comes down to the factors surrounding that positive case as well as the close contacts.
So just to clear that up, you said those who qualify for test-to-stay, what's a qualification?
Ultimately, if the health department needs it, based on the information that we provide to them, the test-to-stay option is
Okay. Yep.
If they use option four, the health department says use option four.
Yep.
And it'd be real easy if I could say if X, Y, and Z happen, it's test-to-stay.
Right.
Each case is, is different. So it really is a matter of, hey, here's the information, do you tell us what you think is appropriate, and
That's what we do.
That's what we do. So I do wanna talk about testing for just a minute. This question has come up over the last couple of weeks. There are a variety of COVID tests, I'm not gonna get into all of them, I'm gonna talk about two in specific. I'm gonna talk about them because we implement the first one, and we are on course to implement the second one, although we're not there quite yet. So the Binax Now test is a rapid, it's a 15-minute test, simple nasal swab, it's an antigen test. It's intended for symptomatic individuals, so an individual who has one of the COVID, one or more of the COVID symptoms. If one of those individuals presents those symptoms in our schools, we can use a rapid test. It's very easy to administer, it's been available in our schools since last year, our staff is trained to administer the test. IDPH requires reporting of the results. This is the most time-intensive part of this test, it's not waiting the 15 minutes. It's once the 15 minutes is over, you have to collect the information about the individual, the test results, then you have to go to your computer and log on to IDPH website and enter this information by hand. Currently, there's no way to enter all of this into a spreadsheet, let's say, and then mass-update that every day. Every, every case, every rapid test has to be reported individually by hand. So one or two tests a day, pretty manageable. Remember the outbreak at the beginning of the school year at the middle school? It's unbelievable amounts of time. So when things are good, the reporting's not so bad. We have a lot of cases, a lot of close contacts, and a lot of tests that can really We are on course to implement S.H.I.E.L.D., and hopefully in the coming weeks. This test was developed by the University of Illinois. It's a saliva-based test, it's really, the more I hear about it, they refer to it as the drool test. You know, spit in a test tube, you literally let the drool come out of, the saliva come out of your mouth into the tube. It is for asymptomatic, it was originally intended for asymptomatic individuals. So this is used as a screener. You know, if you're an asymptomatic individual and you don't know that you've been infected with COVID or any symptoms, this test is meant to catch people who are COVID-positive but aren't showing those symptoms yet. And the sooner we can identify those individuals, we, any school or organization can identify those individuals and then decide on quarantine, the sooner that we're The sooner that we're removing them from the environment and potentially transmitting COVID to other individuals. So the S.H.I.E.L.D. test is really used for asymptomatic, uh, your average, your average person to determine whether or not they have COVID or not.
So how how do you tell who to test then? Does everybody get tested?
Um, it is intended for, originally it's intended for unvaccinated. If you're vaccinated, there's less of an need, although there have been breakthrough cases because of the Delta variant. So there, a first conversation about, uh, in in other districts about testing vaccinated and and, um, including everybody in that group.
Everybody in the whole school?
Well, a random, random population. So you don't test everybody every day. You know, there's a random selection of of individuals who are, who would be, um, in that group. Uh, whether we decide it's vaccinated and unvaccinated or, and working with S.H.I.E.L.D., and we're not to that decision yet. In working with S.H.I.E.L.D., we we decide it's just individuals who are unvaccinated, which means we need to collect that information. Uh, we have that for our staff, we would need to collect that for our, for our, our students as well. Really, it was intended for unvaccinated individuals. Again, prior to the Delta variant, really starting to see some of these breakthrough cases, but that's a decision that we're gonna have to make with working with S.H.I.E.L.D. Other tests, uh, tests are administered by a third party. So once you're up and running the S.H.I.E.L.D., uh, we don't have people from the University of Illinois here on site. Uh, they administer the program, but then they hire a third party to come in and actually administer the test. We don't do that, our staff doesn't do that. We we work with and collaborate with that third party, um, vendor, but but we don't do those tests. We also do the recording. So this is a real benefit for the school district in terms of kind of the the amount of hours and the labor it puts into it. We did learn during one of our recent conversations with S.H.I.E.L.D. that the the third party vendors who come in to do the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, uh, they can do the BiNex testing in addition to the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. Okay? So, um, you can hire those people. There's no cost, I really should have included this. There's no cost for either one of these tests, the BiNex Now or the S.H.I.E.L.D. The BiNex Now is being supplied by, um, the health department. They get those kids from the state. Uh, the cost to us is to be a labor to administer them and do the reporting. There's no cost to S.H.I.E.L.D. Not to sign up, not for the third party that comes in, even if they do the BiNex Now testing on our behalf, which would free up our health staff to really focus more on the day to day things that go on in our schools. That's just kind of a summary of the BiNex Now rapid testing that we've been doing and the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing that we are looking to implement. Any questions about either one of these two?
And either one of those tests parents have to give approval from, what's the reason?
Have to give, uh, consent. Um, for the rapid test, uh, S.H.I.E.L.D. will, they'll need to opt out. So before we start that program, uh, we'll send out a notification, we're, we're gonna implement the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing on such and such a day. Uh, if you don't want your students to be involved in that and to be selected at random, what you need to do is tell us and we'll take them out of, uh, multiple lists and so to. Either way, nobody's required to do either of these. There are ways to, um, to avoid both of them, either by not filling out the consent for BiNex Now or opting out for S.H.I.E.L.D.
So the purpose of S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, to simply find and weed out an asymptomatic individual, that's really its purpose?
Yep.
Potentially testing somebody who doesn't have any symptoms, we would have never known any different. In theory, they could be spreading it to other individuals.
Possibly.
Yes, yep.
Steve, just jumping on the the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, uh, question. If we can get S.H.I.E.L.D. in, it kind of relieves the bottleneck that is right now in place from the health staff. The current method, just like the current throughput process of contract, contact tracing, it's, it's right now, is it just a student would say, you know, they they are then symptomatic? And then it's the duty or the diligence of the school nurse to then try to figure out who was the close contact with that student? But once S.H.I.E.L.D.'s in place, will that process be gone or is that still in place?
Well, we'll still need to do that. S.H.I.E.L.D. will come in and conduct the testing, uh, but it's still our responsibility to do all of the the close contact, uh, tracing, contact tracing. So our, our health staff, and there are times that other staff, you know, whether it's administrative staff or other staff who who might be available. We'll still need to do the contact tracing, that's still on us to do that and then report that to the health department, to the health department. Uh, the S.H.I.E.L.D., third party vendor would come in to do the, you know, the testing. Uh, we would still be able to do the BiNex Now if we chose, but that might as well be an option for S.H.I.E.L.D.'s, uh, third party to do for us. But we still need to do the contact tracing.
And in terms of decision making authority for who's quarantined and who's not, the school nurse does not have that authority. It's really at the county level. The school nurse is just an administrator in this process of contract, contact tracing.
Yeah, they're, they're the ones that are part of the the contact tracing, gathering the information, and then typically it's, it's one of the health staff that that reports that to the health department, uh, so that the health department can make that decision about a potential quarantine. Yep.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Do we have any kind of a timeline for when we think, uh, S.H.I.E.L.D. will be able to be here? And then the second question is, when S.H.I.E.L.D. does get here, will that be, um, open to staff members who need to be tested as well?
So the answer to the first question is we don't have a definite timeline from S.H.I.E.L.D. yet.
Just an, do we have even an estimate or?
You know, initially, they were telling the school districts four to six weeks until the vaccine mandate was, uh, implemented. And that caused a lot of school districts to sign up all at once. So, um, I would say that there's not a firm timeline from S.H.I.E.L.D. It's just a matter of, here are the steps, if you work through one step, we'll go to the next one. Uh, S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, uh, BiNex Now is open to students and staff, and S.H.I.E.L.D. testing will be open to students and staff as well.
Steve, since I know there's a lot of tests out there, I did some quick searching this afternoon, but it looks like, and then correct me if you know better information, but BiNex testing is about 85% accurate at detecting positive individuals. And as I understand, the S.H.I.E.L.D. test is more like 99% accurate. Is that your understanding as well or do you have other information?
I could quote exact numbers off the top of my head, I don't know if Nick knows this better than I do, but those sound pretty close to to them, good enough.
So if S.H.I.E.L.D. does not come, if we just assume for a second that we don't ever get, that it's the Chromebooks, right? And it's months, months. If if we don't have S.H.I.E.L.D., does the current, uh, model right now that the district has in place, does it sustain? Can it handle that kind of capacity like that outbreak again? Like, is it, it just puts a huge strain on our our healthcare.
Not, not indefinitely. Uh, at some point, um, and and we've talked about, you know, the potential to, uh, to have to hire additional health staff. It looks like S.H.I.E.L.D. is not gonna come online for whatever reason, or it's gonna be extended, you know, longer than you think. Uh, the health staff is working really hard, really hard on, uh, that outbreak at the beginning of the school year. If you drive around the schools at 7:00, 8:00 at night, a lot of the staff are still here and it's doing the reporting, it gets doing the paperwork, it's gathering that information still. Uh, it's not one night, it's, we, we can have two weeks, you know? It just takes that long to get through it all. So, um, it is sustainable in the short term to keep our doors open, but it is not a long term solution. So I hope S.H.I.E.L.D. comes online. Of course, there are still a lot of unknowns, uh, I think, about what happens here over the next couple of months. And I don't want to get too far off the rails, but, um, you know, there's, there's talk about the the vaccine being available, you know, through for for students under 12. Does that change any of the executive order and the instructions and regulations? Uh, if that does, do we go to, I I know some states have made the decision that only COVID positive individuals have to be quarantined, they don't need new contact tracing anymore. So it's just those individuals who are out and everybody else is is eligible to stay in school. Does that happen at some point in Illinois and at what point might that happen? So, um, our rapid testing is sustainable for the short term. We need to continue to think about longer term options as some of those other, you know, issues or questions kind of can answer. Uh, but they're working really hard right now.
I I just think, you know, if we have the funds, the asset funds, if there are available funds, if we, if we might be better off being more proactive and just building out our capabilities, assuming S.H.I.E.L.D. is not gonna happen. And if that might be, you know, at what point does that decision, you know, come to the board? And and is it after two, three, four more outbreaks happen or is it, you know, being a little more, um, proactive? And that's, that's just where I'd lean, is a little more risk averse and say, hey, maybe we should not count on it.
Sure.
But I don't know.
Yeah, and and we've had those conversations, so on on an ongoing basis, you know, is it worth it now to look at hiring a couple of additional health staff? Those people are hard to find. Uh, like a lot of the staff that we're looking for these days, uh, some districts have looked at temporary, you know, temp agencies to bring those people in on a short term basis. So we've talked about that, we've had, you know, conversations with some of our health staff about that. Um, bringing those people in on a temporary basis requires a little bit of training and supervision, so you're gonna balance saying, okay, you're you're taking those people away from what they're doing already. So all sorts of questions out there, but I agree, but let's try to be as proactive as we can. So we have those conversations on an ongoing basis. And, uh, if if we feel like there's a point in time where we need to move on that, certainly we need to touch the board.
And we have done some of that already. We are, uh, health staff from where we are in Illinois here and from where we projected to be at the end of last year. The change in guidance complicated things. Um, it's great for students, great for continuity, great for keeping kids here, but it's created more work for health staff and others, um, because there's more to work through, right? Every situation's not the same. Just to give you guys kind of a point of reference, the first month of school, um, we administered 544 tests, um, the first month. And that's for test to stay, that's for short quarantines, um, and that's for symptomatic, all with consent, but to get, get students to stay more than we could have last year. I think our April might have been our busiest month last year and it was 135. So, just to give you guys a point of reference. So that's where, um, I appreciate your your comment about, um, contact tracing because that is so time consuming. Even if S.H.I.E.L.D. doesn't take that over, just, uh, administering of the test is a, is a game changer, I think, um, and huge for our health staff because of that number of tests.
But, you know, I'm just wondering if we we shouldn't really start to take steps now, because if it's gonna take time to train these people and they have, they need time to come up to speed, uh, we don't want to be in the middle of a crisis and then reacting and trying to say that they're not trained or we got, you know? If we think we're busy now, we're gonna be so much more busy then. So it might be, might make some sense to at least bring on, maybe you're not, you don't bring on the whole crew that you you think you need, but at least part of that crew and start training them and getting them acclimated so that, you know, just in case something happens, we're ready to go right away. We're proactive instead of reactive. And that's, I think that's what, that's what Mike would say.
Exactly.
I'm trying to understand, just knowing, health department, the health rooms in these schools, I know prior to COVID, that was the busiest office in the school, especially at the high school. I cannot imagine how these people are, the nurses and all, I don't, I can't imagine how they're, they're doing all this. I mean, I'm astounded at these numbers and I agree with Jim. I mean, it's scary to me to think, I mean, I, how, what are they doing with the children that have, all the children that have asthma, all the children that have other medical issues and, like, heartaches for these poor medical people? How are they juggling all this stuff? So, uh, if we could do something to give them some, I mean, I, you know, whatever you think, but I, I would rather be proactive and contribute some things for the people.
Well, like I said, we've had those conversations already, so we'll revisit those, we'll, we'll talk with Nick. Uh, Nick really is is a kind of a person with our health staff and Corey, Mark are head nerves. So we'll revisit that, you know, first thing in the morning and just have, uh, some conversation here about, about that, what, how could we fill that beat? How many are we talking about? And and if we can't find a viable candidate to hire in the school district, then, you know, looking through a temp agency and then talking with our staff to, to, to that process. So, um, we'll look at all those options, but I, I certainly don't disagree, we're better to be prepared at a time than we are to be taught on a very. Now, any other questions, excuse me, about testing? I'm not quite done yet, I got a slide or two left.
Oh, this is good, thank you.
Yeah. So let's talk about remote learning, uh, just a little bit. So initially, just some his history here, last spring, the state board of education approved a resolution that only students who are ineligible for the vaccine and currently quarantined, qualified for remote learning. Uh, that was, that changed over the summer, um, right as the school year started. We didn't get that joint guidance, however, officially from the state until September 21st, last week, if you, if you're following along. Uh, no frustration there. So that, that official guidance finally came, the initial indication from the state that remote learning should be provided to all students who are quarantined, came in an, uh, FAQ document from the state board of education. So the official guidance didn't come until September 21st. Uh, but it does indicate that any student who's quarantined qualifies for remote learning. Uh, it also clarified that remote learning consisted of four hours of instruction. This is exactly what remote learning looked like last year. Uh, up to half of that can be independent practice, homework, working on an assignment or a project, or completing an assessment. So, um, these are guidelines. We are encouraged to do these things, um, but there's still some flexibility from the state. So, uh, half of that time, two and a half hours, they need to kind of try to some work in assessment as a guideline. Every student is gonna learn differently. So that next bullet point, the five hour, based on the estimated, estimated amount of time a typical student would complete those activities. A typical student, you know, the definition of a typical student, I think, changes more and more every day. So kind of trying to hit a, a moving target here, but that's kind of the standard, the rule of thumb that our staff uses when they're preparing, uh, instruction for, for students who are out of the building. It can be synchronous or live or asynchronous. Uh, the state doesn't require that it's one or the other. Uh, it encourages schools to to use synchronous or live instruction, but it doesn't require that, primarily because the guidance changed after the start of the school year. And had students, and had schools had an opportunity to plan for that, things might have been different. But because the guidance changed after the beginning of the school year, that's a little bit of flexibility that the state has given us. Uh, so far, we've used remote tutors in grades K through six. Uh, we did that initially, we're continuing to do that. We're using learning management systems, Google Classroom and Canvas in grades seven through 12. Uh, Canvas really is, is a little bit more, um, comprehensive, robust, if you will, than Google Classroom and the high school staff. Everybody there, uh, uses Canvas, the training was provided last year. You probably remember Mr. Eisen and Mr. Carlson talking about that Cook rollout. I think it was supposed to be three years and it got done in like three weeks. So, um, everybody uses that in the high school. Google Classroom is used primarily here at the middle school still, but Canvas Now is available for middle school staff. Uh, there was, I think, out with grade reporting that that we've gotten fixed. Um, so now middle school staff have the option to to start transitioning, um, to Canvas. That's where we want them all to be eventually. Um, I feel like that's the the better learning management system overall for middle school and high school, but we're also in the middle of the school year already. So requiring them to do that, it just doesn't seem right. Uh, but it's available and if staff want to start to transition to Canvas, they have the option to do that. I've had questions about finding remote teachers in grades, uh, seven through 12. There are a couple of challenges there. Uh, there are a shortage of qualified, uh, staff and substitutes beyond grade six. Primarily, the third bullet point, as students get older, the the content becomes a little bit more complex. And, um, for the sixth grader home, we now have a math teacher, a reading teacher, a literature teacher. Now we have teachers who are becoming more experts in their content areas. So finding the substitute teacher or remote tutor, like, to really cover all of those content areas really starts to become difficult. So that's why, part of the reason why we've not moved in that direction so far. Uh, classroom teachers still provide instructional materials for remote learners, uh, whether that's through Google Classroom, through Canvas, or even in the K five and and sixth grade. Uh, whole classroom teachers are still providing that. It's the remote tutors who are, um, kind of the liaison between home and and school. Uh, we've discussed live streaming, uh, with, uh, with our teachers for all remote learners. Uh, I've not reached an agreement on that yet, uh, but several people asked me, what if the teacher wants to do that? Teacher wants to do that, and he comes to us and asks to do that, they're, they're welcome to do that, whether it's live streaming or parallel instruction. Uh, those were changes, parallel instruction was a heavy lift last year. But if teachers come to us and ask to want to do that, uh, we've told them that that's okay, we're just not requiring that. So, um, we've had those conversations since really last spring and and everyone's still have those here this fall. Before I move on to staff vaccination mandate, any questions about remote learning?
I have one, so I, obviously, what the staff already has to deal with, just getting their their day to day done with the the students that are in the classroom is already a a full time job, so I appreciate that. Knowing how much work went into Google Classroom last year, especially at the seven through 12, because they were remote until January. I would imagine there's a lot of material. because they were remote until January, I would imagine there's a lot of material available on those platforms from last year. Is that material being repurposed? I mean, are students told, hey, just go tech, check out, you know, what was posted October 4th of 2020, and you'll see, you know, from a pacing standpoint, we're about the same place, and you're going to get about the same content? Or they have to kind of recreate new materials for this quarantine period and say, you know, here's, here's what we're going to be doing this week, where it's an extra burden? Is there any way to reuse all that material from last year?
Yeah, so once those, those, those materials, those links, that, that information is created, whether it's Canvas or Google Classroom, it can be used again. It can be taken down and saved in Google Drive or somewhere else and then reposted again. My understanding is that once it's posted, it doesn't stay there indefinitely. You know, it's up there for a period of time, and when that, that unit of instruction is over, you know, the teacher takes that down when it's appropriate and replaces it with something new. But videos that were taken, content that was, that was created, whether it's a document or spreadsheet, or whatever the case may be, once that's created, as long as it's saved, it can be used again. So for remote learners in grades seven through 12, if we're working through content that, you know, that we worked through last year, as a, as a former classroom teacher, what I often did, I, I saved all of that on a Word document or a spreadsheet. And then every year, when I get ready for that lesson again, I went back and I kind of tweaked what I had done before. You know, changing a little bit here, changing a little bit there, revising as needed. And every once in a while, something really worked for a couple of years, a couple of years in a row. So as long as that content still exists, and we're, teachers have that saved, they can repost that or reshare that. Handy on Canvas, can be emailed to, to students when they're, they're working remotely as well. So it can be used again, but, but there's a little work that's involved there to get it either sent out or reposted on the teacher's end.
And I guess that, that leads then to my next question, is if we can't find or hire tutors that are well-versed in enough of these subjects to truly remotely tutor, can we hire somebody that's tech savvy enough and provide them with sufficient level of access to Google Classroom where they can go back and kind of find out what classes the student has and go back and curate that content from last year from the various teachers who would have taught that subject and deliver a, a curriculum to them while they're remote without necessarily? I mean, they obviously wouldn't be able to support, you know, maybe live streaming and explaining that material, but at least going back and finding, if you hear the 10 videos and eight assignments and everything that was posted last year, to at least give you the, give the teachers a head start in helping to support that, that remote skill.
I, I think the challenge there is that for every teacher, that content is saved in, in their drive, Google Drive, folder, whatever the case may be. So it's not, for the most part, it's not where somebody coming in to access it and kind of pull it out from where it's stored currently. Ultimately, it's still going to have to come from the, the teacher, the classroom teacher, to go back and save, you know, where it's saved in their file. And not either post it or send it out themselves, or then doing essentially the same thing and sharing it with this, you know, potential remote tutor, the, the upper grades who then kind of upload it again or create their Canvas or Google Classroom. They just don't have access to it, and I'm not sure that there's an easy way to grant somebody coming in access to all of those files, still to take, I think, some coordination to classroom hatred. It's still a little bit of work, I think it's much less than, than teachers were asked to do last year, like through the parallel model. And at the end of the day, I think they're going to have to be involved enough that it is probably best to have them, you know, just work with individual students on and getting that content to them one way or the other.
I guess that raises some concerns for me, not, not that there's anything wrong with it per se, or that anybody's doing anything wrong, but as we move to a world where there's all this convenience of digital curriculum material and ways for us to store this stuff, I guess it seems, it seems short-sighted to not have a way of collecting that information. And maybe that just is a historical thing, teachers kept their, their curric, their, their materials, their teaching materials and methods to themselves, maybe not even intentionally so, it was just, well, I don't need to share all this stuff. It's in my classroom, I teach it, blah, blah. But as we move to a one-to, we're in a one-to-one model, but now that we're in a one-to-one model, and we have all these resources to store this information forever, it would seem that we would want to be asking these questions and figuring out ways of saying, oh, yeah, you have to, again, you have to be out, or we're having, that teacher's, you know, out sick for, for 10 days and this, we can't find a sub that knows that material, but we've got all of last year's curriculum or all of their curriculum for this year that they've already prepared. You know, how can we bring in somebody who's not, maybe is educationally savvy, but is tech savvy enough to be able to put all that in together and, and help, you know, facilitate that for the, for remote learners? I, I guess I, I would appreciate just hearing maybe from, I don't know if that's Roxanne's domain as far as how that technology could be adapted to support that, but I'd, I'd be interested in knowing more, how we could better utilize our, our remote services.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a, maybe a question for Roxanne or some of the teachers to talk about, you know, the, the challenges there, what it might look like in the future, but why it can't look that way right now.
To be clear, I'm not trying to put more work on, on the teachers now, I'm trying to say, how can we find somebody else that can use their work from last year to, to make that, that easier?
Yeah, really just sharing resources, which happens within grade levels at the elementary school, which happens at the department level at the, the middle school and high school. If I'm a chemistry teacher and I've, and I've got a lesson or a laugh, it works really well, I'm going to share that. And that's part of the conversation that our, not only do we hope our teachers have, but I think our teachers are having. So for a place where we can share those sorts of things, can we get to a place farther down the road? A little bit, I think, farther in the future, maybe this and maybe that, where that, that sort of content is, is more readily available to a broader group of teachers who can access that. Maybe the stepping stone is accessing it in their class initially, but maybe at some point in the future where it's more readily available for everybody in the district, and we can use that to pull some of these resources together. So, you know, as we think really, you know, part of the, the state of the district today was what does education look like in five and 10 and 30 years down the road? Those are the sorts of questions that I think we'll need to, to have some discussion about and kind of wrestle with. Because finding ways to share resources is certainly going to be something we're going to have to do to make things possible and easier for us and the teachers. So let me have some conversation with Roxanne about that from a tech perspective, and then maybe some of the teachers can be involved and just kind of share how it works and how it might look in the future.
Just want to speak to the, the point about the live streaming instruction, it being an option for teachers. Just, can you speak a little bit to just where maybe the, where you say reach an agreement, where the friction point might be, just for, for maybe parents to understand between teachers and live streaming?
That's a, that's a hard question, it, it, there's just some ongoing conversation about that, that, the work that we're having to try to move to that, that, that place where teachers are happy with kind of the structure that we've talked about, come up with, and from an administrative perspective, and what we're sharing and able to share with the students and the families at home is working. I think there's a variety of factors there, and I could probably speak a little bit more from, from our perspective at the, at the district level. I would be cautious about waiting too far in the water in terms of the teacher's perspective, you know, how that is challenged. So that's a, that's a hard question to answer, but I just know what you're asking.
Can I just, I worry that, like, with remote learning, the, the big emphasis is on content. When in reality, the problem is labor shortage. And so when we talk about building out remote learning, when we talk about building out content, what we're really talking about is, is putting a greater strain on our existing labor force. The, the heart and soul of, of the schools, the teachers, and the more we ask out of the teachers to, to do, you know, whether it's frequent testing, I mean, this is a workplace environment for these, for these people. So the more you put on that docket for content creation or administration, the more I think it, it strains an already strained system. So I'm just, I'm worried about the ask, and I'm worried about as we start to shift more towards remote learning, what's that going to do in terms of, you know, this labor shortage that we already face? You know, there aren't enough paraprofessionals. And that's, that's not an administrative problem, that's a systemic problem, there's not enough paraprofessionals, there's not enough substitute teachers. There's shortages really across the board in, in terms of labor. So as we look towards, well, we're going to build out remote learning, you're going to be basically asking for more from an even smaller pool of people. And so I just, again, I think it, it's really important for, for parents, teachers, and students alike to just be cognizant of where the, where the bottleneck is in this process, and that it's not necessarily content, but more labor issue. So again, the hesitation, like with the parallel model, is the amount of work that's involved in administering it well. You know, it's one thing to turn a camera on in a classroom, but it's another thing to address the various concerns that come up on the other end of that camera. And so, and I just think that it's, you know, that's something that has to be considered in terms of redefining this job description, so.
I think there's some really good points there, not only for the present situation, but again, for the future. How can we make things easier, both for the staff and for students at home? Whatever education looks like in the future, whether it's remote, more remote, or more blended, or, or whatever the case may be. At the end of the day, really focusing on what's best for students, but then how can we do that in a way that's effective and, and reasonable for the staff as well? So I, I think there's some really good points there.
And I, and I'd agree with you, and, and I would just point out, and I, and I've talked to Steve a little bit about this, that, that I, I think that's why he's emphasizing here, we're not requiring teachers to do that.
Right.
But if a teacher decides for their classroom that that's, that it's not a burden, or that's how they want to reach those remote students, we're just saying, that's an option too, you're welcome to do that, but we're not requiring.
Which would raise the question then, by any parent, why is my teacher not doing this? Which then imposes that burden on the teacher to explain why. And to me, just, I think that's unfair of an ask to the teachers. I think at the admin level, or at the, I'm sorry, at the, the district level, we should be imposing that choice of if we are not implementing parallel model, but not putting that choice on the teacher's individual. Because it can breed division on the group level. So I just, again, that's a point I, I don't necessarily agree with.
It's a, so there's a really good point there. And it's been a long time since I've been in the classroom, but 20 years ago, when I was in the classroom, those issues were already there. You know, I, I worked in a school where there were two eighth grade science teachers, and if I did something different than the other eighth grade science teacher, the principal heard about it, teachers heard about it. There was conversation about it. That problem is not new. That, that is not a new issue. The difference today is that when there are cameras and technology, it makes it more public. So those conversations have been hav, happening for decades. Those issues have been out there for decades, I dealt with those at the building principal 20 years ago. The problem, the difference was, I dealt with it and only a few people knew about it. It's like bullying in, in, in today's age. And bullying has been an issue in schools for decades. What makes it harder now is that kids go around video recording, posting it online on social media, and then everybody sees them. So I think that's one of the differences with the parallel model, live streaming, whatever the case may be. You know, parents today without cameras, they, you, you ask parents, they, they compare notes what's going on in one class as opposed to another. But the cameras make it different because it makes it more public. So I, I think that's something that we need to continue to be aware about, that's part of the conversation. And again, not only now, but in the future as well.
For remote, for remote learning, is there a, is there an estimated timeframe of, that's given when, you know, if I've, if I receive a call that my child has been close contact, I'm blindsided, right, probably? And Nick keeps blindsiding a bunch of people in these calls, they're not expecting it, as opposed to somebody who's, you know, my child is sick, I'm getting him tested, they're starting a process potentially that this is a path we may have to go down. I'm getting this call, now my student, my child is going to have to be out of school. Do we provide them a turnaround time for this? Because I can't imagine, if you're calling me at four o'clock in the afternoon, that this thing is starting next day, 7:00 a.m., wake up in the morning, we're good to go. Do we provide that turnaround time, do we walk the parent through that, how does that process work?
It's a little vague, just because every situation and the timeline is a little different during that outbreak time. You know, in a scenario like that, the, the lead time is, is longer, just because you're coordinating with more students and their families. We generally try to do that as quickly as we can, and in some cases, it, it may be the next day, quarantine falls first thing in the morning, you can get things kind of set up and going the next day. If, if there's not a lot of cases to deal with and it's early in the day, you know, just a couple of examples of, of variables there. And as you said, at the end of the day, if there are a lot of cases going on, it, it could take us two days. But if that happens on a Thursday, now it's probably not starting until Monday, that's your problem, you mean. So it's hard to say, hey, this is going to be done within 48 hours. It could happen sooner than that, and we may be in a position where it, it might take that a little bit longer than that. So we try to have that initial conversation, that we're going to give this up and running as, as quick as we can. We may give them a general timeline at that point, just to give them an idea. And then we just, we try to stay in touch with them as much as we can. A lot of times they're contacting us and staying in touch. So just kind of talk them through, you know, how we can do that reasonably with the workload and timelines and stuff like that. Any other questions? Got a couple more slides still? This is it though. So I just wanted to touch on the vaccine mandate, this really just applies to staff. All school staff who are in the building, who work with students for 15 more minutes, 15 minutes per day or longer, need to be vaccinated, show documentation of their vaccination when they need to, to have a weekly test, COVID test, and give those results to the school district. This extends to third parties like contractors and vendors. So if they're in the building for longer than 15 minutes, in a time when students are in the building, they have to do the exact same thing. Contractors don't necessarily need to be tested and give us that information. Their employer can test or report that they are either vaccinated or that they're okay with it or because they've been tested. That does also apply to volunteers, one that was clarified here in the, the recent past. So it's not just employees at the school district, it's, it's really anybody who's in the school district, 15 minutes or longer and is working around students. One of the things we found during our, our work, really Nick's work and his department, the last couple of weeks, is that 85% of our staff were vaccinated, a much higher number than, than we thought. We had not collected that information because we didn't need to collect that information before. So that's, that's good to know, 85%. The remainder of our staff were provided, gave us results on a weekly basis. Needs to do that. Tracking the documentation, like the reporting for rapid testing, is an additional part of the workload now. So that's got to be, that's going to be done one way or the other. It's requirement, effective compliance, or it's unfunded mandate comes to mind again. That's all I'm saying about that. The availability, availability of COVID testing is much more limited than a COVID vaccine. You get a COVID vaccine in a lot of different places, but getting a COVID test is a different ballgame. There are two free pop-up sites that have come open in DeKalb here recently. We've shared that information with our staff as well, so they can access those if they need it. Again, go back to the testing piece, they can be tested here if they want, but they don't have to, they're not required to be in a vacancy. That, that's if they are close contact or potentially positive, we're able to do that testing again, just because of the workload. For this testing, to meet the requirements of the mandate, that's something that our staff do outside of school. That's my last bullet point. Any final questions before I'm done?
Um, I'd say, and then we'll do open discussion, issues, observations. Future agenda. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations, and imminent litigation?
Second.
Move in second, roll call.
Jones?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
Tabitha?
Yes.
Okay, we'll return for executive session, and then we can move after executive session for our final votes. All right. We've reconvened, and is there a motion to approve the personnel report presented? Moved and seconded, roll call?
Rick? Yes. Charlie?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
Tabitha?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Tabitha?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You stand adjourned, thank you. Remember, we got to sign, we got to sign.